Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call our May the 14th, 2015 meeting to order. I'm going to ask that you please rise for the invocation and the pledge by Councilman Olds.
Father, we thank you to this day for many blessings, thank you each and everyone gathered here today. Pray God your hand be upon us in making decisions of your business here with council. Bless our state, bless our city, and bless our country. Bless those that serve us, Lord, near and abroad. Protect them and their families. Go with us throughout this night, and may we all leave here together, even if we disagree, have an agreement to understand this business, and it's the way your hands have been. Christ name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the team, and justice for all.
We're doing these first?
Yes, sir.
We're now gonna have our new hires come forward, and our councilman from the upper end of the city is gonna do those for us this morning, Mr.-
From the upper end of the city. Like, way up there, Mr.-
Way up.
Yeah, yeah. Ryan, can you hear me? There, that's better. Okay, we're gonna call you out, name by name. Please, come forward. This is a special time for you as new employees, and it's a great time for a city councilman too, to see and meet you employees, and, oh, by the way, you're on television, so don't stumble and fall. From our police department, Brandon S. Brooks. Devonte T. Wilkins. Abriel S. Washington Saunders. Mark T. Youngren. Philip J. Shute. Zachary E. Rhodes. Mr. Shute, did I get that right? Shoot, or shut? Shut, shut. Our new firefighters. Gabriel Garcia. Pierre Gueyot. Tiana Griffith. Yancy X. Wright. Deshaun Hairston. Building inspector-
Nope.
-James E. Whitaker.
That one was-
Mister, I'm sorry, Mr. Brinson, there's another row of firefighters to the right of that list.
I beg your pardon. Hang on, Mr. Whitaker. Kendall T. Whitfield. Andrew L. Woodall. Brandon R. Emery. Raheem C. Arthur. Mr. Whitaker, where are you? From Public Works. David R., excuse me, David W. Middleton, Senior. Gary R. Helmular. Devon A. Wright. And from Recreation, Jamal T. Hill. Mr. Hill's not here. Okay, folks, what an impressive-looking group. Kinda special, huh? You know, this is, I think the theme is the one the mayor emphasizes so often, and that is, service is a calling, and your service is to a city that really is a great place to live, to work, and to play. It's sort of the formula, just supposed to turn around and look at the mayor and city council, and if you do that, I'd be grateful. These are the folks who are kind of responsible to our citizens, but more importantly, these are the folks who make sure that you have exactly what it is you need to serve. We wish you the very best, may all of you have long and productive careers. Welcome aboard, and congratulations. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Y'all are welcome to leave if you don't wanna sit-
Impressive-looking group. Mr. Ast-, I'm sure Mr. Astle's gonna do this next one, huh?
The original ad is there in the, okay.
Yep. Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
A proclamation. Whereas the tin can soldiers of Goose Creek were officially designated Desron III, Destroyer Squadron III, by the National Association of Tin Can Sailors on April 17th, 2010, marking only the third organization to receive this national recognition. And whereas the tin can sailors of Goose Creek are veterans of cruisers, destroyers, frigates, and destroyer tenders, with the mission to provide camaraderie amongst those who served on ships affectionately known as a tin can. And whereas the tin can label for a destroyer was coined because the hulls of the ship were a little thicker than a tin can, or about three-eighths of an inch. And whereas destroyers are the workhorses of the U.S. Naval Fleet, providing escort duty for aircraft carriers, gunfire support for land forces, support to subsurface forces, 2015 will be their seventh annual event. And now therefore be it resolved that I, R. Keith Summy, Mayor of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim, April 6th through 12th, 2015, as Tin Can Sailors Week in the City of North Charleston, and urge all citizens to join in a salute to our naval forces in its observance.
Thank you, Ellen. If you've never been in the Navy and never been on a destroyer, it's something really hard to explain, but this is a brotherhood. Even though we all did different jobs, and we fussed amongst ourselves, we're all brothers due to the fact that we rode tin cans, and thank you, guys. Do you wanna say anything? And we'll get you a correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was an error.
Tin can sailors, not soldiers.
Gasp, I'm so sorry.
Mayor Summy, City Council, North Charleston City, we thank you for the presentation. North Charleston has always been in the forefront of providing and thanking the service members from all branches of service, not just Navy. North Charleston has been the lead in the area, so thank you all. Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation of the Clean Cities Sweep Awards 2015 by Ms. Carmen Hamlin and others, I'm sure.
Okay, as most of you know, Clean Cities Sweep is an annual program sponsored by the cities of Charleston and North Charleston, as part of Keep America Beautiful's Great American Cleanup. Tonight, we're here to present the Clean Cities Sweep Contest Awards, a FlowerScape Award, and to celebrate all the wonderful projects done during this year's program. We'll go to the next slide. Before we give out our Clean Cities Sweep Awards, we first want to recognize our 2015 FlowerScape Volunteer Group of the Year, and I wanna call our board member, Nancy Gilbert, up to present this one.
Joint Base Charleston began volunteering with Keep North Charleston Beautiful in September 2014 by becoming a FlowerScape sponsor for the Park Circle Butterfly Garden. Each month, a dedicated group of volunteers comes out of the garden, out to the garden to help maintain it for the community. There is never a shortage of volunteers or enthusiasm as the work out in the garden. They are dedicated, and they are tasked volunteering to take an initiative to plan an event each month, even coming out to work on freezing temperatures. They are eager to help and are a true asset to the company. I'd like to present an award to Joint Base Charleston.
We can go to the next slide. A quick summary of what was accomplished during this year's Clean Cities Sweep. In North Charleston, there were 22,124 volunteers who installed 1,476 plants and trees, picked up more than 4,500 bags of litter and debris. These volunteers donated 43,854 hours to beautifying the North Charleston community, which is equal to over a million dollars in volunteer service. If we go to the next slide. These volunteers groups were made up of students from 31 schools, residents of 19 neighborhoods, and members of six different community groups. The results are truly amazing, and we wanna thank all of our community volunteers, the KNCB volunteers, along with our program supporters for making these results possible. Additionally, we wanna recognize Boeing, who made a very generous sponsorship to help support the program, and we want to thank Lowe's, who partnered with us to help many of the Clean Cities Sweep groups select plants for their locations and offer materials to them at a great discount. Another group we wanna recognize is the North Charleston Police Department, who worked very closely with all of our schools and neighborhood groups this year. We're going to start presenting the awards now. As you receive your award, please come up to the front and stay up front, so we can take a group photograph of everyone at the end. We go to the next slide. Our first award is going to be for our Clean Cities Sweep t-shirt art contest. This contest is open to students from kindergarten through fifth grade. The winning artwork gets printed on next year's Clean Cities Sweep shirts, and the winning student receives an art supply kit, and their coordinating teacher receives a $50 gift card to purchase art supplies for their classroom, and I wanna ask Sergeant Deborah Reinhardt to come up to give out this award.
This year's winner is Daniel Corantes Morello, a fourth grade student from Pepperhill Elementary.
You guys wanna take a picture? We're gonna have his t-shirt come forward, too. All right, the next awards we're gonna present are our school contest awards. That's her. That's okay. Our next award is the Judy Epps School Contest Award. If we could flip to the next slide. The first-place school's gonna receive a $100 sustainability check to use to maintain their beautification project. Second place receives $50, and Honorable Mention receives $25, and we are very fortunate to have Ms. Judy Epps here tonight to present the awards.
Thank y'all so much. This is an amazing city. I have loved it forever, and I thank everybody for all they do. These two young women work so hard to get this thing going, and the beautiful roses that you see all over North Charleston, and the flowers, and the things in the medians, it's just wonderful. They work really hard. The Butterfly Garden is wonderful, too. This year's first-place winner is Daniel Jenkins Creative Learning Center. The entire school, along with parents and business partners, installed a new butterfly serenity garden. Students helped with the design of the garden, they planted the flowers, they created stepping stones, and collected recycled material for the garden. So, Daniel Jenkins Creative Learning Center, congratulations. This year's second-place school is North Charleston United Methodist Church Learning Center. They constructed a new school sign, they built three planters, they planted butterfly plants and raised butterflies, they cleaned the entire school grounds and picked up 11 bags of litter and debris. North Charleston United Methodist Church Learning Center. This year's Honorable Mention School is Lamb's Elementary. They held a school-wide litter cleanup project, they planted vegetables, fruits, and flowers, and raised beds at the school, and they installed two additional raised beds for special education students. Congratulations to Lamb's Elementary.
This is wonderful. It teaches the children about recycling and taking care of our earth, so thank you, City Council, for providing this, and thank you, ladies.
Our next award is the Georgia Smith Neighborhood Award. Like the schools, the first-place neighborhood receives a $100 sustainability check to use to maintain their project. Second place receives $50, and Honorable Mention receives $25, and we're going to ask Ms. Gail Frampton from Northeast Park Circle to come forward. Northeast Park Circle has participated in the Clean Cities Sweep since the very beginning, and we're excited to have Ms. Frampton here to present the awards tonight.
Thank you so much. Clean Cities Sweep has meant much to my neighborhood, and over the years, I have noticed that the residents of our neighborhood take special interest in getting their yards cleaned and helping others who can't quite do that, and it has meant a lot to us. Do I say, please come forward to receive your award after I have introduced your project? This year's first-place neighborhood is Shakora Cherokee. They conducted a beautification project and trash pickup around the neighborhood, planned 50 addition, planted 50 additional vegetables at the community garden, and installed more than 100 new flowers in the neighborhood. Congratulations. This year's second-place neighborhood is Akebee. They installed new plants around the community entrance sign, they conducted a neighborhood cleanup over nine blocks, and removed 24 bags of debris. This year's Honorable Mention neighborhood is Cameron Terrace Oak Park. The neighborhood cleaned up along the North Red Avenue I-526 interchange. They collected 29 bags of litter and eight tires. And I wanna say thank you, Carmen and Sarah, y'all do a great job.
The final award we're gonna present is our community group award. The judges this year chose one winning group to receive a $100 sustainability check to use to maintain their beautification project, and I'm gonna ask Crystal Haunt from Try to Unite a Way to come forward to present this one.
I'm gonna say the same thing. Please come forward to receive your award after I've introduced your project. I have been blessed, I have been blessed to work with this group for quite many years, and is very happy to be able to give this. So, this year's first-place community group is the Matanoia Civic Leaders. They cleaned up the six streets surrounding their location, along with the local basketball court and abandoned property. They plan to hold monthly cleanup events involving residents in the area and parents of the students involved. I will also mention that Matanoia is receiving another award in Columbia right now, so-
We have a lot of film calls this afternoon. So finally, we just wanna recognize all of the Keep North Charleston Beautiful volunteers who work with us throughout the year. We wanna thank you all again, to all the groups who participated in this year's Clean Cities Sweep. You're an amazing group of volunteers, and if everybody could hold tight, real quick, just to take one group picture of everyone.
I want all the presenters and the volunteers to come up here with us, please.
Carmen-
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, I am so proud of Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown Area, for getting three of the top, top winnings. I am so proud of him, 'cause I'm always beating up on him.
Well, I wanna add something to that. He comes out with his neighborhoods, and he works in those ditches, so we love him. So, I'll just add that to it.
I would, I am so proud of you, Mr. Councilman Brown.
Thank you.
All right. Please continue with the printed agenda.
Item one is a request to approve the minutes from the April 23rd, 2015 City Council Meeting.
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any corrections? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Mr. Rome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two is the final reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed and any and all documents necessary and appropriate to sell several pieces of property in Howard Heights to workshops at Howard Heights LLC.
Move for approval.
Motion and a second and discussion. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I did not think the trust of the faith of the property, selling for $9,000, would be able to sit in all jobs.
Let me explain it, so the public will understand it. This property was purchased in Howard Heights, which is across from Windsor and Union Heights, because after the Port Authority took over part of the Navy base, they were going to come in and wanna zone everything out to, Spruill Avenue in that section is heavy industrial. And in that agreement, we thought that they would purchase the property, but in the end, the project has not moved along as quickly as it should, so we met with the residents and said, "Any of you that would like to go on and sell your property," because they were fearful, "Why would I wanna invest any money in my property if I'm not gonna be able to stay here, what have you?" And those people who came forward, we paid far above value of some of that property, but it was the sole purpose to help, excuse me, I apologize, it was the sole purpose to help those folks get relocated and make sure that they were treated fairly. And I think, as a government, when part of a negotiation that results in the impeding of the quality of life of people who live in an area, that we should go in and try to help them, and so that's what we've done. Now, the group that's wanting to come here is a startup-type business. It will offer opportunities for different craftsmen to come in, it's not intruding on the neighborhoods across the street. It's probably one of the cleanest type of industrial operations that could go on, and the land is sitting there doing nothing. And we wanna see the opportunity for new business startups and people to create jobs and things of that nature, and that's the purpose of selling it at the price we are about. Mr. Mayor?
Much difference in the prices we pay for it, I didn't mind helping people out to help them in the beginning, I saw it, we sell the property at a cheap.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Will you clarify, am I, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but I thought that these monies that we even purchased these properties were, were not city monies, it was through some other form of assistance or grant, or- Well, I'm not positive whether we used naval base money that was coming in from the Port Authority, it did not come out of the general fund. That's, yeah, that's what I wanna make more of a clarified point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor-
Yes, sir.
If I'm right, we had an option to give away that property in a deal that, even that Charleston Rails or Palmetto Rails didn't even want those properties.
That's right.
So, I just wanna make sure that is clear.
If you were to do an appraisal on the property today, this would be a fair price. You gotta remember, when we bought them, they had houses on them, there's no houses left, we cleaned them, cleaned the property off, and so the value diminished. We knew it was gonna diminish, but we were, again, trying to help the citizens that lived in Howard Heights. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three is the final reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement and any and all documents necessary and appropriate to allow Mixon Avenue Partners- agreement and any and all documents necessary and appropriate to allow Mixon Avenue Partnership LP to enter into a maintenance agreement for city parks.
Move for approval. Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance rezoning the properties addressed as 2728 Spruill Avenue, Charleston County, TMS 4660400, lots one and 17, from M1 light industrial to M2 heavy industrial, and concurrently amending the comprehensive plans future land use map for the same parcels, changing them from light industrial to heavy industrial.
Planning Department.
Good evening. Can we advance to the slides?
Oh, yep. Yes, we can.
So, this is the proposed rezoning from the stated, of the stated properties from M1 to M2 heavy industrial. The property owners are Pat and Mike LLC. The applicant is the owner in this case, represented by Vanessa Smalls. The area of the two properties together is approximately 2.62 acres annexed in 1984 and a part of Council District 10. This is pictures of the property as was posted for tonight's meeting. And this is an area of the property showing its location at the corner of Spruill and Viaduct where it goes into the Navy Base. Just to the south is a cemetery. And behind is a, excuse me, a rail right-of-way that is currently unused but will eventually, most likely be developed for rail access into the new container facility. And this is the proposed rezoning, showing the two properties in light purple, which are currently zoned M1, are proposed for M2. As you can see, the area on the base is zoned M2, as is the area south of the cemetery to the south. And this would be the map amendment for the properties to go from light industrial to heavy industrial. So, this is the proposed rezoning of two subject parcels. There is, I should note, there is a container storage plan for these properties, which will be considered with the second reading of this ordinance at the next council meeting. The 2002 MOU that was referenced earlier committed the city to rezoning a swath of parcels in this area from M, to M2, including the Howard Heights properties. And these two parcels represent the last of that area. Given the industrial character of the area, the 2002 commitment, and the proximity of the, to the proposed intermodal container transfer facility, staff recommended approval of the rezoning and the planning commission concurred unanimously.
Any questions by council?
Does, may I have any? Just kind of a technical question if I'm, if I'm right.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps this is better addressed to Dirk. I'm very interested to see this narrative that we apparently are still obligated under the 2002 MOU with state force authority. That's still enforceable, even after our negotiated settlement in 2012?
Well, I think that there are some aspects of it that certainly we called into question, but we've not wholesale walked away from that. In fact, if you recall, I think we left some of the issues of the 2002 MOU with the port on the books and enforceable against them. So, yeah.
But the one that I remember, the remnant, is the requirement of all of that. To be honest with you, beyond that, I didn't remember anything surviving the 2012 negotiations.
Well, the negotiations...
And I'm willing to be at a bias.
Well, I mean, the negotiations were principally with rail as far as settling that dispute. And, you know, I think holding the port to its obligations in that document is more difficult if we're not honoring our own. So, I would, I would suggest that we go ahead and honor with respect to...
Although, I don't, I don't have any problems with any. I've, I've found it interesting in the narrative that we are asserting that we're still subject to the enforceability of 2002 MOU.
Well, I think we're in a position where we have already started that zoning on different pieces along the way, and it would not be fair to the rest of the folks that are there that they can't get rid of the property.
Certainly would agree with that, Mr. Mayor. My, my point is, are we, are we not still subject to the enforceability of 2002 MOU? Beyond all the, actually, we treat it in language in 2012, so...
Well...
We could probably talk about the...
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd prefer to go with the executive session if you want to get legal advice and analysis.
Maybe between now and committee meetings, we can talk about that. Again, I don't know that it has any consequences, except either we are or we aren't.
I'm entirely happy to discuss it, but perhaps in a more private setting.
Any other questions by council? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue?
Good evening. My name is Omar Mohammed, and I represent the Charleston Community Research, Charleston Community Research to Action Board. We are located at 2125 Dorchester Road in North Charleston. We, earlier today, we emailed each one of you our written comments on this, this matter. And we oppose this for two reasons. One is that we believe that rezoning any property, particularly in the southern end, from light industrial to heavy industrials, opened up the door to other, other properties becoming heavy industrial. And that counters the revisation plan that LAMPSY has for that area. So, that, that is the first reason why we oppose this rezoning. The second reason we repose, we oppose this, this rezoning is that we have, since 2007, Sea Crab and LAMPSY have done extensive research in the community. Where we, one of the research we, we have done, we collected 200 soil samples in our community, including the Chacor Cherokee where this, this particular property is located. And every soil sample that we collected had high levels of arsenic. And it exceeds the EPA's residential screening levels. In some cases, particularly in Chacor Cherokee, those soil samples exceed the EPA's screening level about four and a half times. And we have the actual data. You can pull up those, those data in a online mapping tool that we developed. It's ejradar.org. You can find that there, and you can click on any one of those soil samples, and those concentrations come up. The second, second study we did, we did a distribution study of the whole Charleston region of unwanted land uses. And what we found is that communities, particularly communities that are, that have low educational attainment, that are, are less affluent, and that have, what was the other one? In a high presence of minority populations, they tend to host majority of these unwanted type of land uses. So, those are, those are the reasons why we are currently opposing this, this rezoning from light industrial to heavy industrial. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask him a question? Since you're opposing this, and I'm looking at the maps, and everything else is, is already M2 around you there, what, you said, you made mention that it was against what LAMPSY was proposing. What are they proposing?
What, for that general area, we have a revisation plan, which includes the Stromboli corridor. We're looking to turn that area into a mixed use. Green space, housing, affordable housing, as well as economic development for that area. We believe that, that rezoning this area from light industrial to heavy industrial is going to, to deter that type of investment in that area.
Would you pull up that map? Please?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Because I think this is the piece that's right at Viaduct Road, isn't it?
Yes, it's right by Viaduct Road. Now, hold that, hold that one right there, and then I want to go to the one previous to that. Right now, you've got M2 in the dark purple. I can't tell what the one is between what we're rezoning in that dark purple, because I can't tell whether that is B1 or if it's not in the city.
Not in the city.
Not in the city. So, if you look at the picture that's there right now, just what do you plan to do? You plan to rezone the purple, too?
No, sir. What, what we're planning to do is, we do not want any more land in our communities going from light industrial to heavy industrial, particularly heavy industrial. Because with heavy industrial, we know what's coming. It's in the area where the port is. We know, we know that that area is going to be used for, to support of that. We're looking to revise that whole area. So, that's going to deter any revisation effort in that community. So, we oppose any changes of rezoning to heavy industrial, period.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mike, what's your take on this?
Well, my take will be addressed at the committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think there was a lady that she got to speak, and she, you got to speak there.
I was. I've got to say, I'm a representative of Kecan Corporation, and we are requesting a M from M1 to M2.
P M2.
And it's not a...
Can you please come to the mic, darling, and give us your name?
My name is Vanessa Smalls, and I'm a representative from Kecan Corporation. Unfortunately, the president of the company is out of the country at this time. As far as it being a hazardous or high arsenic within that property, that's not the purpose. It's a construction company, which is a small construction company, which builds for the government. We are obtaining from M1 to M zone, I'm sorry, to M2 for, for, to add more offices and more property within that area, not for anything other than that. And there's a metal company right next to us, which is also M2. So, I mean, it's not where we're trying to hinder or change it.
How long has your company been there, do you know?
I believe since 1999, 1989. And we build for the government.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I did not intend to stand, but I figure if I live in the area, I might as well speak up.
Name and address.
My name is Barbara Ori, and I lived, grew up in Windsor Low area.
Where do you live now?
Now, I live off of Dorchester Road in Summerfield subdivision. So, I'm speaking for my family, who still lives and resides in this area. I think no one is really paying attention to the fact that how long or how often are we going to continue to build in our area, heavy metal? When are we going to say no? Think about where you live. Do you have any heavy industrial in your area? Do you, do you really?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But I want to just say this, because like I said, I didn't anticipate to come and stand. But we have a bit too much in the area, as it is now. All of us, Spruill Avenue. And I actually took a picture, and it's a different area, but it's still around the same area. And nobody should live or drive every day seeing containers stacked so high that you don't know whether they ever topple over and hurt someone. But I just want you all to think about that. How often are we going to continue to grow metal, heavy metal, light industrial to heavy industrial in our areas? We have to stop. We need to grow more education in our area. We need to help this, the children in the area. We need to build parks. We need things that will help to revitalize our life. And that's the thing that I think you all need to really consider. And that's what I hope that you will take a look at. But we don't need nothing more than we already have. We've got way too much. Now, if I, I'm going to just point this exhibit to you. I want you to take a look at that. This is on Main Street Road. That's it.
That's not in the city.
That's Main Street Road, but there's more to come to that. That's just one.
That's not in the city.
That's not in the city, North Charleston?
Neither is the OGEX property.
Okay. So, that's in the city of Charleston, is what you're telling me? That's county.
Charleston County.
Charleston County. Okay, same thing. They're all in the same area. They're not far from each other. It's just surrounding the area.
We don't have any control over Charleston County.
I understand that.
And that's why they don't annex in the North Charleston area.
Oh, yeah. I understand, I understand that. But that's just part of what I wanted you to, to, to see. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, there's, I think the pictures that she's showing right now, and it's, that's right at Burton Lane in, in...
Right there by the Baptist Association.
By Baptist Association.
Right. And I think that's someplace else. I think that, if I'm not right, that part is in the city, but GEX is not in the city.
That's what I thought.
So, those are points we're trying to remove or put some type of limitation on it, amortization on trying to remove some of those containers out from stacking within the communities. And I think that's Mr. Rhodes, Anthony Rhodes, in big red, that has that part that, on those pictures.
And we do have a park going in. We purchased the tank farm, and we're building a new Four Bay Fire Station there now. And the rest of it is going to be, we're working with the school district to create a park that can be used by the community, but also used by the school as well for their practices and what have you. And then we will have joint use of the new Chacor Elementary School being built. And I don't know if you know it or not, but the city purchased that property, or the school district, to build that, that school building.
Yes, sir. But I still want you to really think about that, because there are health disparity in the community, and we don't need any more industrial building in the area.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I heard my council member say that we got West Vago. That has been there for over 50, 60, 70. But there's no house, there's no houses around that area.
Yes, ma'am. You're absolutely correct.
And you are right. All the heavy industrial, light industrial, everything is on the southern end of the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Not going north.
North.
And West Vago, you can't mention, yeah, well, yeah, we got West Vago. That was there like, my mother moved up here in 1958. That was already there.
Yes, ma'am.
And plus, yeah, 1936, like you said. But there's no housing subdivision around that area.
Absolutely.
And if you ride by West Vago, it's beautiful.
Yes.
Up in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, they have, although that's there, they have made it a beautiful area with the park close by and everything else.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it still don't look bad. And I see exactly where you're coming from.
Well, I thank you for addressing that, councilwoman. But, yeah, I would like that you all really take a look at that. And like she said, have you recently built anything in your area that's heavy industrial? You answer that question, and I'll end it at that. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Jesse Williams, Dorchester Way, Constitution Avenue, North Charleston. I'm against M2 simply because there's a narrative that we're seeing here. And I like to ask the question, where is that corporation from? Where, with demands traveling around the country, around the world, we're here sitting around, we want to figure out what, how we can help North Charleston. So, I'm against M2 because there's a narrative of catering to the corporations going to industrial. And the fact of the matter is that M2, going from M1 to M2 means they, any, any company can open up right there. So, I have no, I really don't have any questions for anybody. I just wanted to voice what my... I just wanted to voice what my thoughts are. We have Boeing over here by Dorchester Wayland. They're doing their thing. They got Trailwood, tore that down. They're doing their thing with that. So, I just think it's a narrative. So, if we can think about just M1 to M2 and how that is impacting the residents, that would be great. That's my thought. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Council, this will be referred to our Public Safety Committee, which meets at 5:00 P.M. next Wednesday, instead of Thursday, next Wednesday. I'm sure everybody understands that. All right, Madam Clerk.
Item five is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as 1937 Redwood Street, Charleston County, TMS 469-1600034, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Multi-Family Residential, and concurrently amending the comprehensive plans, future land use map for the same parcel, changing it from Single Family Traditional to Multi-Family Residential.
So, this property is proposed for rezoning from R1 to R2. The property owner is Ms. Rebecca O'Brien. She is applicant in this case. The property is eight, excuse me, 8,453 square feet, annexed in 1972, and a part of Council District 10. This is a picture of the property as it was posted for tonight's rezoning, or here in tonight's meeting, excuse me. This is the location of the property on the corner of Chikora Avenue and Redwood Street in the Chikora Cherokee neighborhood. This is the zoning of the property. It's zoned R1, as are the properties that are contiguous to it. Across the street is the Chikora Tank Farm. And this is the future land use map showing that this parcel and its contiguous parcels are designated for Single Family Traditional, noting, however, that there are some parcels within the same block that are zoned and have a future land use for multifamily development. So, the subject property has a duplex on it that was recently moved to the site in February. Because the parcel is zoned R1, only one dwelling unit is permitted in the building that has been placed there. So, the owner can't get utilities to the other side of the building, or the second unit. She is applying for this rezoning to remedy the moving of a duplex onto a single-family lot. Given the lack of contiguous zoning and the lack of support from the comp plant, staff recommends denial, and the planning commission concurred unanimously. And I would note that two neighborhood residents spoke in favor of the planning commission, in favor of the rezoning.
Any questions by Council? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks.
So, I'm Rebecca O'Brien. That's my property. I think, as she spoke before, I purchased that lot. I owned the lot. I knew that they were tearing the houses down to put the new Chikora Elementary. I spoke with the city about getting one of the houses. I had to wait till the Charleston County School District got the houses. I spoke with Larry and got the okay to get the house from the Charleston County School District. At the time, I didn't really think about it being a duplex or not being a duplex. I was just thinking about saving one of the houses on the property. Also, I live in the neighborhood. I actually resided at 1927 English Street. So, this property is one block away from where I reside. So, I was determined to save one of the houses being taken down on the property. And this seemed to work with the gentleman that was moving the house for me. Picked two properties that were in the best condition. This house was in the best condition to move it so that none of the trees would be taken down and it would fit properly on the lot. I went ahead, moved it. It is a duplex. It's set up as a duplex. We have one side that's up and running, the other side is not. I wanted to make it into, excuse me, make it into a duplex. This property was zoned R2 at one point. It had two structures on it, and it was two lots. It does meet the requirement to handle a R2 zoning, and with the size of property that I have on it now, I checked with my neighbors to see if they were okay with having the R2 zoning. They said yes. I went in front of the neighborhood council meeting. Unanimously, they voted yes to have the R2. So, that's what I'd like to do.
How many square feet is the house, do you know?
I think it's 1,200. I think it's like five something per side, so altogether, it's close to 1,100.
Have you thought about the possibility of opening up and making it a 12-on-the-square-foot house?
We're a little too, we're a little past that. We actually had gotten a permit to do electrical, so we had done electrical for the whole entire side. We put up a panel. It's too expensive. I couldn't redo it. And I don't want to change the integrity of the house. I mean, it's one of the 1940s cottages. It's indigenous to that neighborhood, has beadboard ceilings, beadboard walls. I don't want to rip that out. I don't want to mess it up. I want to keep it the way it is.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. King.
I had to get a permit to get something to do there. It's on, right? Again, how do you get the permit?
She's got, she said it's wired. She hasn't got the other side hooked up.
I got a permit to...
But they do when they give them out of check, because they do with the duplex.
Correct. And we just, it was a duplex. It went forward, kind of, no one really realizing what was going on. I didn't realize some of the things I should do. They didn't realize some of the things they should do, so they went ahead and allowed. It had already been wired. They'd already pulled the permit. They already got the wiring. We were, the guy was coming to do an inspection and realized that it had been, that it was a duplex. I thought they knew it was a duplex because I got a permit to move the property. The city used to own the property, so I assumed that they knew the structure they were moving. So, I didn't think of anything else. I've never done this before. I've never moved a house. I've never had it done, the duplex. I didn't know. So, the city went ahead, gave me the permit. They did the wiring. When they went to do the final inspection, they weren't able to do it because then they realized it was a duplex, and so went from there. So, I spoke with the building. I mean, I spoke with Darvis, and we tried to work it out best we could.
Any other questions by Council? Any other questions for the lady? Yeah, it's coming back to committee. Any other, anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Anyone else? Hearing none without objection, it's referred to, yes, ma'am, come on forward. No, ma'am, you have to come up here and give us your name and address for the record.
I am Voran Wells Grant, and I live next door to the house that's being talked about. I have no problem with it being zoned to an R2, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're quite welcome.
Do you own your house?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none without objection, it's referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets next Wednesday at 5:00. Clerk, please move forward.
Item six is the first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as 1946 Iron Street, Charleston County, TMS 472-1200011, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Multi-Family Residential.
Excuse me. This property, which is located in the Ferndale neighborhood, is proposed for rezoning from R1 to R2. The property owner is Property Matters LLC, represented by Patrick Hill. The area of the property is just over half an acre and is part of the original city and part of Council District 7. And this is a picture of the property as it was posted for tonight's meeting. And an area of the property showing its location at the corner of Iron Street and Piedmont Avenue. And there are four buildings on the site. Sorry. And the next slide is the zoning of the property. The church just to the north of it is zoned R2, while this property is zoned R1, and the remainder of the block is zoned R1. And this is the future land use map for the property, which shows that the church in this one has a single-family designation where the subject property has a multifamily designation. So, this is a multifamily property. It has 10 units, but apparently nine electric meters. As I mentioned, the comp plan designates the parcel for multifamily development, which supports the requested rezoning. Given the adjacent R2 zoning and the supporting future land use category, staff recommends approval, and the planning commission concurred on a vote of 6 to 2.
Any questions by Council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Our preceding issue, Agenda Item Number Five, please explain to me what is distinct difference other than having the adjacent multifamily? Because in the other corridor, there is multifamily within close proximity. Why would one be denied or not recommended and one be recommended when this is more than...
Well, this one has an established multifamily use, and it has a future land use designation of multifamily.
And when you say established...
There are nine, there are 10 units on the property, and they're all being used.
Well, I thought it's zoned R1.
It is. It's a legal non-conforming use.
So, it's operational?
Right.
Oh, my apologies. Okay. It's not vacant property, asking, okay?
No, sir.
Clear. That clears it.
And I think Mr., I think Mr. Brown would remind us that there was a massive effort to rezone that property in that area to R1 so that we could start creating more homeownership and an opportunity for people to take control of their neighborhood.
You're talking about the previous five items? Mr. Mayor? Yeah, that's respectful. Respectful.
Actually, it's my understanding that happened in both neighborhoods, Chikora and Ferndale, around the same time.
It shouldn't even come up. I did not know it was, I'm sorry. It's distinctly different.
It's okay.
This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks. Yes, sir.
I'm Patrick Hill.
That one's not on. I could get the exercise.
Hi, I'm Patrick Hill, and I've worked with Property Matters. And we purchased this property in foreclosure, and we have rehabilitated the outside and inside. And we're actually working right now with Crisis Ministries, well, formerly known Crisis Ministries, with 180 Degrees, and we're getting some veteran housing in there right now. So, we're pleased to have all nine units occupied, and we're waiting for the last meter to be installed. And instead of getting a variance, we decided to go ahead and ask for this. It appears that the church was switched with our property because the church really wouldn't be single-family, I mean, wouldn't be multifamily. And it may have just been a confusion when all that was going on. So, we just appreciate you taking the time to look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing none without objection, it's referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets at 5:00 P.M. next Wednesday. Madam Clerk.
Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as 2118 Cosgrove Avenue, Charleston County, TMS 469-1100105, from B1 Limited Business to B2 General Business.
Yes, sir. So, this is requested from rezoning from B1 to B2. The property owner is Cosgrove Properties LLC, represented by Ronald J. Davis. The area of the property is just over a third of an acre, annexed in 1972, and a part of Council District 10. This is a picture of the property as it was posted for tonight's meeting. And an aerial, excuse me, the zoning map of the property, I apologize, it's a little washed out, but that is, it's currently zoned B1, as is the block, the block it is on. However, across the street is zoned B2. And this is, the area of the property showing it's fairly well, thoroughly developed. And this is the future land use map for the area, showing that this parcel, as the other parcels across Cosgrove, have a future land use designation of mixed-use centers. So, this is an existing office warehouse building in the B1 district. The future land use designation of mixed-use center supports the requested B2 zoning, and there is nearby zoning, B2 zoning right directly across the street. Given these reasons, staff recommends approval, and the planning commission concurred unanimously.
Any questions by Council? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we refer it to the Public Safety Committee, which meets at 8:00 P.M. next Wednesday.
8:00 P.M.?
Excuse me. We're going to item eight, 5:00 P.M. next Wednesday.
I hope it's not 8:00 P.M. Item eight is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance amending Sections 612, 613, 614, and 511 of the City of North Charleston zoning ordinance regarding buffer areas, screening, landscaping, and street trees.
Eileen? So bad.
So, just briefly, this is the same version of the buffer ordinance that was before, it was considered by the Committee of the Whole at its meeting of February 19th. It was referred from the Committee of the Whole to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission asked for one slight clarification that's highlighted in your ordinance, just to add that in addition to requiring a B2 buffer, excuse me, a type-B buffer between commercial uses and single-family residential, it would extend that protection to all residential that is adjacent. That was the change we had already made. They pointed out that it would be appropriate to still require the type-B buffer between a single-family residential neighborhood in an apartment building or mobile home park. So, we added just that clarifying dissimilar residential uses based on their request. The Planning Commission, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission concurred on a 5 to 3 vote.
Any questions by Council?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to know, have we given any consideration to the composite type of buffering?
What do you mean by that? I'm sorry.
Ms. Williams referred to...
Sound walls.
Sidewalk?
Sound barriers.
Oh, okay. Yes, sound barriers, type of composite.
No, we haven't. That is part of the record, of the mandate. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Eileen. And just for the record, thanks to staff, thanks to legal and to Council for helping come up with something that's not all of what we want, but somewhat a progress. Ms. Williams and I had really hoped for something to come up to 25 to 30 feet between properties. However, we realize that people have property rights, but we also realize that people deserve to have protections and quality of life. So, while we have not made the full force completion of what I believe we could get to in this Council's term, maybe over the next decade, we can get to what Ms. Williams and I have tried to achieve and get something more adequate than 20 feet. But we've moved from 15 feet to 20, so a little's better than nothing. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and legal and staff.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor Summy?
Yes, ma'am.
This is going to be referred...
To the committee, correct.
Okay, because when we discussed the buffering and we saw the fence and we saw the plants in front of the fence, this is what we need. We don't need just flowers, trees. That's not a buffer. And it's not really going to help a homeowner from a business because they still could see it. And they need to pick up a fence.
That's in there, Ms. Williams.
That's in this one, too.
I'm sorry I left that out. That is another step that we've made in good progress. We're required now to put an eight-foot...
Along with the...
An eight-foot opaque fence in all buffers.
Gotcha.
And I'd like to clarify that. That is true for type C.
All buffers between commercial and...
For industrial and residential, but not commercial and residential.
See, that's, I just...
Our general business?
No, sir.
Are grocery stores?
That's not, that's not the way it was written. No, sir.
That's why I brought that up, because I know I didn't see that. But that need to be there. Any business that's adjacent to homes need to have more privacy so the homeowner could be more happy and they don't have to look at a business. So, that need to be brought up. So that need to be brought up at the committee meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Oz?
Yes, sir.
Is this fence wood, wood type of fence?
It's an opaque, Mr. Hart, and I'd rather if we could just let's hold discussion for next week because we can discuss this in committee. Yeah, if we can discuss this next week in committee.
Anyone else from council? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing none without objection, it's referred to the Public Safety Committee, which will meet at 5:00 P.M. next Wednesday.
Item nine is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement between the City of North Charleston and UE Contexture LLC regarding a portion of the Garko Mill property.
Move approval. Have a second?
It's not a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
It's not a public hearing, sir.
Yes, Ms. King?
Talk about this, now both negotiations are going on. For us to have some part of a cultural arts center in that particular location.
We-
We're gonna sell a building and not have a cultural arts center in that location.
I'm gonna let the lawyer explain what we're doing to you.
Absolutely. Mr. King, we are selling the entirety of the mill building. If you look on screen page 127, that's building C1, as well as the little piece called the annex. Originally, it had been explored to see whether we could put part of our cultural arts use in that building itself, although that presented some problems. There weren't any real tax benefits that we could enjoy and it diluted them somewhat, I think, for the purchaser additionally. Putting a municipal use inside that building potentially changed some codes and made that not particularly viable. It also caused some problems for the buyer because their timeframe required us to move and our ability to move that fast was not assured. What we've looked at doing is now selling them the entire building and retaining for ourselves what's shown as parcel B and parcel A. That would allow the city the flexibility to build a new building if it desires for cultural arts. It could be on parcel B and it would butt what is called the, the annex. Although, we've also had some thought, I think, about whether or not it might be more desirable to put a structure at the corner of O'Hare and Empire because it would have higher visibility and perhaps add greater value to the area. So I think that the administration's thought is still certainly to do a facility there, but we're exploring where we're gonna get the most bang for the buck.
Yes, Buck?
Are we gonna build a cultural arts building there or are we not?
The administration's plan is to, it will take a vote of the council to do it.
We made a promise to our council and certain people in the community that we're gonna do this, and so we need to-
Well, what we've been trying to do is replace, we've been trying to replace some of the things that South Carolina Rail took from us on the Navy Base. And in building the new senior facility at Northwoods, not only did we buy the church that's gonna be changed into a senior adult facility, there was another 10,000 square foot building that we think we can house some of our art programs in it so that we can have some programs up there, some programs more south.
Good looking.
So, you know, it's, it's a good opportunity. What we still want to put here is actually a production theater. And what we discovered when we started looking at it is that there are grants that are available to do these type of projects that are available to private sector that government can't get. And so therefore, in the end, it will be less costly for them to redo the building than the city. And we have talked with them about the potential of leasing internally, the addition, if we wanna turn that into a facility, or we have the choice of building a, a new facility. But they're, these folks have been great to work with and we're very pleased with the opportunity. This is a company that started on the naval base, how many years ago? Ten? Thirteen. With 20 employees, two, and you now have 200 and growing. And what they make is lamps. It's more of an arts craft that they do. They make lamps that they sell in New York, all over the east, west coast and Europe. And, and if you go in there and ever watch the craft going on, I mean, these people are artists. They're just making something instead of painting something.
We're really gonna have arts facilities?
Yeah, it, it's really very entertaining.
That's a great company, no question about that. But the problem is if we could get part of that building for the cultural arts, and we talked about that and been talking about that for a good while now, and I think-
They have said that if we want that section, that after it's done, there's a period of lease time that we would have to do to meet the conditions of the grant. And then the potential for us to buy it later would be there.
Well, we want, we wanna try to get agreement before we go into, before we agree to sell it. We oughta have some kind of agreement before we sell it as to what we're gonna do with it.
Just to be entirely clear, Mr. King, the proposal is to sell the building because it was, I don't think economically viable-
Yes, right.
Put the arts facility actually in this building.
I understand that, but we-
Trying to do that would have essentially meant that you were left with a shell that was not redeveloped. So you're kind of in a position-
If they develop the building and we lease part of it from, or however we work that out, that's what we wanna do.
They release from them.
Well, that's what I was talking about.
Mr. Mayor, and to address Mr. King's concerns, when we went in this, this was exploratory. That was the whole objective of why we did it, to do a study and an analysis to see if it was gonna fit the city for what we wanted to do.
Well, the biggest-
And now we discovered that the cost was so astronomical and not feasible. Is that correct?
Well, I think the reason we went into it, we didn't want it to be torn down.
Well, we wanted to preserve it, but we agreed by, by virtue of this council that we were going to delegate certain monies for it to be looked at environmentally and such to determine whether we wanted to pursue the, the arts center and the additional cost. And I think we've made a conclusion that it's not cost efficient for the city to deal with that building.
I think you may find it, going with what you're saying, probably in the long run, more cost efficient. If you look at the diagram where it says parcel B, you could actually put a structure there that goes right up to what's called the annex and it would appear as though it's sort of integrated. And it was probably easier to do that than it was to try to shoehorn a municipal use actually into the same building that UE was trying to renovate under the tax.
And we also looked at the potential in parcel A on the property of budding O'Hare that it may be an opportunity for someone to come in, buy and build some additional commercial and-
We talked about parking there too. Designations and delineations of, of partial B and C, A and B, I, I think you've done a great job 'cause, you know, you gotta have somewhere to park over there. You can't keep building buildings with nowhere to park.
This is re, will be rezoned to Plan Development District? Or what was the zone?
It's already in a PDD.
Yeah, before Garko was what, M2, M1?
That probably was M2.
Oh, just, just wanna bring that to Mr. King's awareness.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Marison.
Eight-four B, that's right.
Dirk, can you explain to me in layman's terms this park parcel that, that we're gonna be buying back?
Absolutely. What, and it, let me explain in a second what park looks like to some extent, but it's parcel C2 on the diagram here. And essentially, it's, I understand, gonna be a hardscape kind of a park. But in any event, to the north of that parcel is one of UE's buildings. To the south is the mill building that's gonna be renovated. The idea is that what you see in the center of C2 is gonna be a public space. That parcel needed to be redeveloped. It's the back door to one of their buildings and the front door to the other. And it needed to be redeveloped at the same timeframe as they're doing their project. Rather than us trying to come up with money and trying to do that, they have agreed to bite that off and to go ahead and do it now. We then have basically a nominal cost lease for 10 years where the public can use it. During that 10 years, the TIF is expected to fill in and you'll be able to repurchase it with the purchase option. And so the city will own that. The price for repurchase, I think, is 151,000, which is the cost that they're paying us for the dirt. So we'd refund them that. And then the cost of their construction, so whatever we agree on the design, that cost, we would basically refund that too with the carrying cost.
And the great thing- So basically like Riverfront Park, the way it was done?
Well, the great thing that we've got here is that while they would use the parking during working hours, their normal working hours, on the weekends or at night, one of the things we're getting so many requests for is to shut down Montague Avenue for little street events and what have you. This would help us relocate the street events there so it doesn't shut down Montague. It's a dead end, you could remove the parking and then you've got the walking area and then the park scenario in the middle. And it gives us an opportunity to do more events that would curb. One of our concerns is always, we don't wanna damage any of the businesses because we cut off the street for events.
I have no- Appreciate the Riverfront Park for just one second. I mean, it's not their building necessarily on our dime. What we have is a repurchase option.
Right.
If you don't like the option, you don't have to exercise it.
Oh, no, I, I have no problem with the concept and, and the plan and everything. It's just the financing. That's my concern.
Well, you, you are certainly welcome to use general funds. What we tried to do is build in, essentially backload it to give you this additional TIF financing as an option. But I'm sure they would be thrilled for us to come out of pocket anytime with, with general fund money.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, kind of a series of many questions. I would acknowledge Mr. King's concerns. He's been very consistent about that. A home place for cultural arts has been something that, you know, I've heard you talk about for years. And, and I know we'll have much more time to deal with this at our committee meetings, but we're, we're selling this property without warranty, Dirk?
Well, I mean, their due diligence period, they know what they're buying.
We're selling it without warranty. I mean, they choose not to go through with it.
I'm not quite sure I understand what you, I mean, are you talking about a warranty deed or are you talking about, I mean, I'm not-
Being relieved of any environmental issues going forward.
We have a grounds field agreement with respect to that.
Right. So we're covered. I mean, we, we're-
We have defined liability with DHEC, but having been in the chain of title.
Right, we can't escape from that, but we-
They're doing their own due diligence and they'll be buying it as is.
Or if they won't buy it at all.
Correct.
Okay. And they're gonna give us a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Right? And we're gonna have some more property there. And I think I heard you say, Mr. Mayor, that it's your intention to build or to create some sort of cultural arts facility.
Well, cultural arts, we've actually looked at the possibility of cultural arts either to the front or the back, creating some more retail, but then parking deck as well to accommodate the people that are coming into the village at night.
So for this part of this redevelopment scenario, we're getting an organic private company to do what really the city had hoped to do. And we're putting a million dollars in our pocket. And we're really increasing the profile of this very interesting, again, organic North Charleston company, Urban Electric.
And-
What's wrong with this deal, folks?
And I wanna remind you that we've got 235, I think, apartments going in at the back that the beach company is building and it is adjacent to a rail line and to an industrial properties with chemical tanks adjacent to it. And so it's, it's all, you have to look at it. I mean, it's there, it's not going away. So we've got an opportunity to, to build. And, you know, the beach company was the original company that purchased this property. And I'm just glad to see us get it off the, the ground and get something going before Bob and I die.
Dirk?
Yes.
All the plans and for the, the access to it, for the, take the traffic off that Montague Avenue, Mayor, for our, for our, me, instead of closing down Montague Avenue all the time, that's a great concept. And I do commend y'all and I thank you for coming to North Charleston. I just wanna get some cultural arts in there.
You've always been in District 10, but you'll be moving away. Now, thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions by council? Is this a public hearing? No, it's not. Okay.
Just a motion for first reading.
Motion to move forward with first reading. And take the second reading.
Got a motion in a second. Ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Mr. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olles?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That's all I have on the regular. John doesn't know their speakers.
All right, we have six people, I think, that requested to speak. Remind you that you have three minutes. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and give us your remarks. We're very proud to see our ladies here tonight from North Charleston Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Theta Sorority come tonight and I think they wanted to address us, they're first ones on the list.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks to Mayor Summy and City Council for granting me this opportunity to address council. I am Mildred Hudson, I'm president of the North Charleston Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Just wanted to pass on some information regarding our chapter. And in an effort to become more visible in the community through our public services, our sorority and our chapter have made an uncompromising commitment to provide services in the community. We welcome any opportunity to partner with, participate with, and/or assist the City of North Charleston in existing services and programs that will benefit the citizens in the North Charleston community. We are a public service organization, currently providing services and participation in the areas of voter registration, domestic violence, reading programs at elementary schools in North Charleston, Habitat for Humanity Women Bill in North Charleston, and we give scholarships annually to graduating seniors at high schools, attending high schools in North Charleston. This chapter year for us, we participated in the North Charleston Christmas Parade and we are currently sponsors of a Little League team in North Charleston. One of our goals is to purchase, acquire a building in North Charleston where we will be able to provide additional services and offer programs to the community operating from our building. So I just wanted to inform you of our presence and what we're doing. We are looking to increase our visibility in the City of North Charleston. And again, we offer our services if we can be of any help. I thank you for your time and your patience.
Please let us know when you're ready to start looking for a building. We'll sign someone from our staff to-
We have started.
Well.
Okay, we have started.
Ryan, stick your head around the corner.
While, while you're waiting on Ryan to show up around the corner.
Young fellow right there.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, yeah, we've started and we, we have someone, one of our members, Ms. Bradham, who's chair of that, and she will definitely be in touch with the office.
If you'll just give us, you know, which areas you're looking at and if we know of anything, we'd be more than happy to work with you.
Thank you.
Right, right now you are- Right now, you are... Your location is out of what community center?
We are operating out of Park Circle and Acabey Community Center.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And we are very grateful to the city of North Charleston for giving us that opportunity to meet where we can carry out our programs, and of course, we concentrate in the city of North Charleston. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Do you want me to read them for you, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be Shayna Lee Cracker Forest, Durant Avenue. Who signed up?
It's Shayna Lee Cracker Forest, and I live on Durant Avenue. I am here tonight to talk about what's needed within our police department. And, you know, the longer that I live here, and the more I'm in the community, the more disappointed and appalled I am at the stories that I'm hearing by the community members here. I have to say that I am privileged to not have had to deal with being harassed by police officers. And my family has been privileged, growing up, to not have to worry about sitting on our porch and having officers come up and ask us what we're doing, or while we're gathering at the parks or the playgrounds, and there's a group of us, I've been privileged to not have to worry about being asked what we're doing at the park. And there's an organization that has been asking for a meeting with the city council to talk about a citizens review board. Simply asking for a meeting to sit down and talk about the citizens review board with subpoena power, to see what is being proposed. And when we have people within our community, large numbers of people, whose quality of life is in the city council's hands, children who are afraid of police officers, people who will not drive any longer because they're afraid they get pulled over so often for no reason, and now they're afraid for their lives. So, I would like to ask you, please, please take the time to sit down and hear what your community members have to say. I walk through neighborhoods and hear people's stories.
Please give us your closing remarks, three minutes is up.
Please take the time to have this meeting with Black Lives Matter Charleston, to hear about what they have. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Brandon Fish.
He didn't sign up, only the people to sign up, my friend.
Not nearly as much fun. All right, well, you know, I would... This is my third city council meeting, I think, attended here in a row, and, I mean, I don't think it takes a detective to understand that there's clearly a problem going on. Whether that problem, in some people's opinions, is merely a perception, or whether that problem is a serious problem, either way, y'all have a problem to solve. Y'all have to solve people's perception of the police department, or y'all have to solve the problems within the police department. Now, I have to admit that even though I'm conscious of what's going on across the country, I wasn't so conscious of what's going on in North Charleston, in certain neighborhoods, because I haven't had to deal with that. I haven't had to deal with feeling unsafe, not because of crime, but because of officers. I grew up in a suburb, officers were... Made me feel safe, to make my parents feel safe. And to hear that in these neighborhoods that has to do with poverty, violence, school-to-prison pipeline, the people who need the city the most and police department's protection the most, to hear that they're on top of this afraid of being abused by officers, and those officers going unpunished, it's... It just makes it all the worse. And the situation should be the opposite, and if there could be a culture of trust built, then a lot of these other problems in the community would go away. People would feel more comfortable cooperating with police departments, and the police would feel happier doing their jobs, because people would be more respectful to them. And I think the key to this is an understanding that if there's an officer on the force that's received a lot of complaints, that they're going to be dealt with. I think this whole case with Walter Scott made it clear that this particular officer had had a reputation and a history of being violent with people before this ever happened. And I think that these young people's goal is to try to prevent that from happening again, and I think that what they're asking for is not unreasonable. They're asking for accountability, and they're asking that citizens play a part in that, have agency in that, and have some ownership of that. And if that was to happen, it wouldn't just be better for them, for the residents, it would be better for the police department too, because it would improve that relationship. Now, these people have been here every week, trying to exhaust the democratic process, talking to each and every one of y'all, trying to contact a mayor, and have been unable to even get a dialogue, have been unable to even get a simple response for a problem that the whole country was focused on, and hasn't been dealt with for a month in any kind of reasonable way. Now, you know, if people are worried about bad things happening, and violence and riots, I don't know how not addressing this in the democratic way you can is the way to prevent that from happening. And I fear that something like this is going to happen again, that another Walter Scott is going to be killed, and that the people that react to that aren't going to be reacting by coming into the city council and talking to you, aren't going to be reacting by having nonviolent demonstrations, and they're not going to be organized by people. They're going to be people venting their frustrations, all right? And I just implore you, I implore you to meet with your constituents. Y'all are elected representatives of these constituents, and to not address a problem because of volatility-
Please give us your closing remark.
To not address a problem and cite volatility as the reason to do that as a city council person, as a government, is paradoxical and ridiculous, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, Muiiden DeBaja.
Seen you a couple times in a lot of different kind of formats. Sometimes I'm very angry, sometimes I'm very expressive, sometimes I'm very calm, sometimes I can speak like a litigator, and sometimes I speak like a protester. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. I need you to understand what that means. In a democracy, the people are run... They run their democracy. This is not a corporation. You are not a CEO, just so you know. When we're approaching you, we're approaching you as people we are trusting to actually take our concerns into consideration and do something about that, honestly. So, when we come to you and say, "Right after Walter Scott's killing, we need a citizens review board with subpoena powers, let's just talk about that, let's just open up a discussion, let's just imagine a world in which people that live in a community that trust somebody to walk around with a gun have the power to say, 'Aye, you're intimidating my children, not... A matter of fact, you're intimidating three or four other people's children.' We need to have the power to summon you to court and say, 'Officer, under oath, why are you engaging in this practice?' We need to have the ability to have these officers understand that we want to oversee them with the trust and transparency that they oversee us. That's a citizens review board, that's what we do, we establish trust. It's a place, it's a mechanism for trust to be built. For our demonstrations to go in vain is something that's not going to happen. And contrary to what Councilman Bobby Jamison has said, and the quote, "Let's have the facts come out." That demonstration out here has nothing to do with the city of North Charleston, it has to do with the show that they want to put onto the black community across the nation." Now, this is a quote from Councilman Bobby Jamison from District Three. With this quote, we understand that there's people sitting on this board right now who do not have the sensitivity to understand and to feel the rage and the passion that has been building up for generations of harassment and terrorism by a police force. We would like a citizens review board, an ability to actually establish some legitimacy and trust with an institution that has historically and continually abusing its power. What more examples do you need? If you would like peace in this city, if you would like Black Lives Matter Charleston, if you would like this group of wonderful, intelligent youth that are growing up and living in your community, I graduated from Academic Magnet, like, right down the street, why would I ever assume I have to come and talk in this kind of tone to people that are supposed to represent me? This is unnecessary.
Closing remarks, right.
Citizens review board with subpoena powers, think about it. Each one of you, I will be coming up, or somebody else will be coming up, and we will start to pick out each one of you and bring up wonderful facts and quotes like Brother Bobby Jamison, and we will make this a show-
Time is up, sir.
-that's not really going to be a productive show.
Your time is up.
And we will continue escalating.
Your time is up.
I need you to understand this, y'all. Your time is up, Mayor Summy.
Well, that's fine. I-
Was that a threat?
You can give me all your idle threats you want, I don't care. All right.
Next is Colleen Yost. Colleen Yost? No present?
Okay. Next.
Is Jason Slade.
Mr. Slade, I remind you, you have three minutes, please. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Jason Slade, and I'm from 116 Eagle Ridge Road in Latson, and I am also demanding a citizens review board with subpoena power and transparency, and I'm going to go into history to tell you why. At the beginning, we recited the Pledge of Allegiance. At the end, it says, "For liberty and justice for all." I have decided, not too long ago, to never recite this again until that statement is true. The fact of the matter is, this was written when all excluded enslaved Africans, and frankly, it always has. Enslaved Africans were never freed, actually, they were emancipated, which means just to transfer property. So, the overseer from the plantation also transformed into the police department that locally and nationally continued to oversee the transferred property. They justified this by creating misinformation about them, calling them three-fifths of human beings. They were able to do this by segregating them from the rest of society, starving them economically with the hope of crushing them spiritually. Lynchings and hangings ran rampant with vigilante groups such as the KKK. Every step of the way, law enforcement has played an oppressive role, or looked the other way. They zoned them on top of each other in inner cities, underfunded the schools, they tried to teach a whole group of people to hate themselves, but it didn't work as planned. The civil rights movement, Malcolm X, Marcus Garvey, AIM, the Black Panther Party, Black Liberation Army, et cetera, brought huge resistance and love and some change. The power structure had to nip that in the bud. They devised counterintelligence programs and infiltration to subvert the movement. Thirty years ago, as of yesterday, a whole neighborhood was bombed in Philadelphia looking to destroy a movement for liberation, killing eleven people, six of them children, destroying sixty-five houses in a block. During this time, a new kind of slavery was emerging, the prison-industrial complex, free labor for many industries. They devastated... Or they devised the war on drugs, acquiring cocoa plants from Colombia to manufacture cocaine and crack to fund a regime in Nicaragua, the Contras, who was in support of U.S. interests in Nicaragua. Not coincidentally, the war on drugs followed, further creating conditions of despair and creating criminals for the prison-industrial complex. If they weren't enslaved in prisons, they were disposable. From then until now, from Emmett Till to Oscar Grant to Walter Scott, they have been able to get away with all this because there is no transparency and an aggressive culture to anyone that speaks up. This is why I demand the community review board with subpoena power. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will let you know that on the Sunday after the funeral, when we had a guest come in from out of town and speak at charity Baptist Church, I had an opportunity that day to meet a young man that is the community development person that deals with police and community activities out of Atlanta. He works for the federal government. That was on a Sunday. On Tuesday, he gave me his card, and on Tuesday, he was contacted to come and meet with us to help us start working closer with the community, looking at what we have been doing and getting suggestions on what we need to do. Because of his schedule, that meeting was held today, and we invited community leaders from across the community to come in and meet with him. I did the introduction, I got up and left, because I want them to have the opportunity to say what's on their mind, and so, it was just police officers and these folks. Because you see, I see an even larger picture. It's not just about this police officer that shot somebody. It's about the violence that's going on in our communities today, all around. We have in... Since Mr. Scott was shot, we've had eight young men shot in the city of North Charleston. We had a mother killed the other day. She had nothing to do with what was going on, but she was shot to death riding in her car because her car looked like the car that the shots were going back and forth from. Today, we arrested a sixteen-year-old. And so, what we've got to do is look at what programs that we're doing in the community. Yes, do we need to enhance the relationships with the police in the community? Yes, but we also need to enhance how we stop this violence that's going on in our community. And so, hopefully, out of this workshop that they're having, they talked today for two hours, and they'll be coming back to us with some ideas, concerns, what have you, and we'll keep the public informed as that progresses.
We're coming to you right now, and we live here, we're not going to there.
You don't have a right to speak right now?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, this gentleman is from the Department of Justice?
He is the southeastern head of the Department of Justice for Community Relations with Police.
And I am a citizen of North Charleston.
I didn't say you weren't, but right now- I didn't say you weren't, but right now, you spoke. Now it's my turn, now we've got a council member speaking, and we're not going to have the meeting interrupted. Yes, sir.
This was your initiative to reach out to him as a representative of the Department of Justice?
Absolutely, and he was here in 2008.
And this is beginning a dialogue that will be going forward.
Correct.
And you're going to keep us posted, as you just said.
Yes, sir. This was sort of a get-to-know-each-other today, and...but I didn't want to have...I didn't want it to be considered that I was having any type of pressure, influence on anything that was said and done, so I vacated the meeting.
Were any other...were any city council members there?
No, sir.
Only the community leaders, the chief and the assistant chief.
Okay. Anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.